Starting now, okay. Now, before I start, I think some of you may be having some questions. If you have any questions, because I heard some of them saying that can we have a sample presentation? How do we go about? So what we're going to do is see the basic idea is taking you beyond your comfort zone. Now, when you join a course of this kind, I know pretty well that some of you sitting in those webinar or zoom may not even aspire to be a trainer or a coach. You'd like to do what you're doing. While some of you may want to, in fact, Amit Kotak asked me one question before he joined. Is it for people who are wanting to get into training? Because I don't want to get into training. The whole idea of this course is that it is to make you articulate speaker, an orator, and as we move along in the community, we are even, we are even planning to have a debate where you will be in a position to speak in a outrageous manner. Because I had what is called as a devil's advocate and which people like Vishaka and Dominique had gone through, which to me is the most amazing. In fact, I keep repeating again and again and again, and I think I will not be bored or tired of repeating it. Of all the interventions I have designed in my life, of all the conceptual things I have spoken about in my life, if there is one thing which I have to say has made a difference to everyone, everyone, when I, when I say everyone, it is everyone. There is not a single soul who had gone through the devil's advocate and can say that, no, I didn't get transformed. Because all process, the way it had been designed and the way it makes you think it takes you out of the comfort zone completely. But some or other, I have always felt, ever since I started. This kind of thing, I have been skeptical about how effective devil's advocate would be in an online environment. Because it's a devil's advocate which actually had turned people to speak like a Barack Obama or an Andrew Obama. Now, even now I'm skeptical. So the other option is because I, I don't think anything else can come closer to devil's advocate. Probably Vishaka and Dominique can vouch for that here. I don't know that Harish Reddy, you had gone through devil's advocate with me? Yes, no?
No, sir.
Yeah. So that is when I was exploring, what is the other thing which I can make people do, which could probably not give them the flavor of devil's advocate? For all you know, you may never know, you know, kind of person I am, I might still throw devil's advocate at you guys and say that, okay, you guys, how to do devil's advocate? I don't know, I'm not decided. But I've always been, I've been skeptical, skeptical, right from the time I decided to launch online, I've been skeptical because I don't really know whether that effect which comes out of it offline, going on a stage and roaring like a lion or a lioness, whether that feeling, that experience can be brought online only when I do it and I'll be in a position to say whether it is possible or not. So the other option I had was what could throw people out of the comfort zone? When I defined what is going beyond your comfort zone itself, something which you are not, you're not done before. Something where the topic is not comfortable for you. Maybe you are not an expert in the topic. All these are also comfort zones, issues, comfort zone challenges. So this whole idea of asking you to take a session on the ten commandments, because one, before you got introduced to the session, including Vishaka and Dominique, might not have had a complete download as far as ten commandment is concerned. And for many others who are sitting here, you never aspire to be a trainer. For somebody like Ravi, I don't know about Ravi, Amar, Dilip, no way, you know, Sochan, no way, I think so, Amit Kotak, no, Rajendra, no, Ramana, no, Ramana may be joining in a few minutes. So that is when I realized, asking you people to present on the ten commandments itself and being like a trainer itself is throwing you out of the comfort zone. Whether you want to be a trainer or not, that's another story altogether. Even I would always say, even when devil's advocate happens, they would always say, in military, they never ever go through certain situations. In fact, if you look at it, wars are not fought every day. But the men in the services must be prepared for an eventuality. In fact, there are people who are in the armed services who probably have never seen a war. Because some of them in the, some of them do not stay for twenty, thirty years in an army. They stay for five years, six years and they come out, they've never ever seen a war. But army training is as if there is a war tomorrow. Get ready. So when you are prepared for the worst, anything lesser than the worst will be a cakewalk for you. Anything less than the worst can be a cakewalk for you, which could include devil's advocate, which could include presentation. So that is the reason why I'm asking you to present. So how do I do it? Whether I should do, you should have presentation or I should only speak, I leave it to your decision. Normally, I'll give you a small tip here. If you are great speaker, if your speaking skills is something great, naturally it comes, then do not use the presentation. Do not use a PowerPoint. But you think that probably if a PowerPoint is there, the impact would be better, then use a PowerPoint. If you think you can show something and which can have a better visual impact than just speaking, have a video. If you have a lot of figures and data to share, have a PowerPoint. Remember what I told you in the last session, I just ran through it, so I want to take it a little bit length. VAC, Visual Auditory Kinesthetic. And ask yourself, what is the kind of person you are? A kinesthetic person would love a story. A visual person would like to see, even if it is data, they would like to see. Even auditory person would like a story. But a kinesthetic person would like a story because they feel it. Because remember, story is a fact embedded with an emotion which may inspire people to take action. I repeat, story is a fact embedded with an emotion which might inspire people to take action. So your choice, open-ended, but in devil's advocate, I would not even give the choice. Devil's advocate is only speaking because what devil's advocate are supposed to do is, is to throw you out of the last inhibition, which is there in your DNA, has to come out. And then there will be no inhibition. So that is the idea. So now, choose amongst the eleven topics, which is the ten commandments plus the power of human voice. One of them choose it. And whether you want to present it, whether you want to speak on it, whether you want to repeat what I have given in my proposed book or you want to do your own research, I leave it to your decision. But what it would do, it would do a lot of confidence because content sometimes may not be yours. And you never aspire to become one, but you can speak, which means you are speaking on a topic which, on which you are not a domain expert. You're not a domain expert in public speaking. Okay, Amit is a domain expert probably in electricals and in trading. Ravi is a domain expert in IT. Amar is a domain expert in HR. Sochan is a domain expert in digital marketing. So if I were to ask you to speak on digital marketing, it would be much easier for you because you are breathing, living, sleeping, dating with digital marketing. But public speaking is not something like, say, if I ask Vishaka to do on GST, she will do it. Because that is what she is doing every day. What is five percent, what is, what is twelve percent, what is eighteen percent, what is twenty eight percent? Why is this, how do I do, which, which can you can take credit, what is output credit, what is input credit? What is, all those are, that is what, it should be on the fingertips. Should I use Google Live, should I use Facebook, how do I lead, how do I do lead generation? How do I do blogging, how do I do microblogging? How do I use LinkedIn, how do I use YouTube? That is what Sochan has been doing. So out of your comfort zone is to take you out of that. So the idea of making this presentation is not to make you a trainer, not to make you a teacher, not to make you a coach, but to take you out of the comfort zone. Because understand, please listen to me carefully. Our mind, if I put a video on, no problem, put your video on, absolutely no issues. The power of the man is in the power of the mind. Swamiji Veekkananda said, whatever the mind of a man can conceive and believe, it can achieve it. Sorry, not Swamiji Veekkananda, Napoleon Hill. Swamiji Veekkananda said, an atheist is not someone who does not believe in God, an atheist is someone who does not believe in himself. A century back, Richard Back wrote, God never gives you an idea without giving you the power to accomplish it. Henry Ford, a century back said, if you think you can, you can. If you think you can't, you can't. Either way, you are right. So whether it was a Buddha, Gautama Buddha, who said the mind of the man is the man. Or a century back, Henry Ford, an entrepreneur, or a century back, a spiritualist in Swamiji Veekkananda, or a century back, it was Napoleon Hill, everybody, Richard Back, everybody seems to be pointing out towards one thing called as a mind. The mind of the man is the man. You are the mind and the mind is what you are. Mind itself has got two components. One is the conscious mind and the other is the subconscious mind. Listen to me carefully. Rajendra, are you listening to me? Amari, are you listening to me?
Yes, sir, I am listening.
Yes, sir.
Conscious mind and the subconscious mind. A detailed thing on subconscious mind is there on Impact YouTube. I spoke in two thousand and eleven. One eighth of your mind is the conscious mind and seven eighth of your mind is the subconscious mind. Subconscious mind was, subconscious mind is and subconscious mind will be. Now, you don't have to be a mathematical expert to tell whether one eighth is bigger or seven eighth is bigger. All of us know seven eighth is bigger than the one eighth. So your subconscious mind is amazingly more powerful than your conscious mind. Now, next step comes. People talk about personality development. Sorry, Harish, I thought of giving it to you, but I'm taking it out. I'll give you something else. Okay. Personality development, I'm not saying this, one of the most profound practitioners of Vedanta. If there is one man who had been able to present Vedanta in a direction which will be understood by people up to an extent, not, not in a very easy manner, sorry, not in an easy manner, up to an extent, it has been Epar Sardhi. Epar Sardhi, who was a cricket fan, who has actually conducted training programs for Indian cricketers, who used to run a Vedanta Institute in Malabarail in Mumbai. Epar Sardhi wrote an amazing book called Vedanta Treatise. I'm just seeing if I got, yeah, this is the book. Now it is coming in leather pack and all those package. It was one of the greatest books which was gifted to be by my mentor on twenty five seven nineteen ninety five, on my birthday, when I never expected this. I wanted some other book, I wanted Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, but he gave me this book. He woke me up in the morning and gave me this book. And he said, let growth be multi-dimensional, be versatile. Yeah?
Can I, can I repeat the name of the book?
Vedanta Treatise. I'll, I'll type in the chat box.
Sir, can you share in our group?
Yeah, yeah, I will share, I will share, I will share, I will share. In fact, it is coming in a nice leather pack now. Okay, so he wrote, let growth be multi-dimensional, be versatile, know yourself first. And in that quest, this book will certainly help you. See you at the top with love, Titi Dangarajan, excited to be alive, twenty five seven nineteen ninety five. In fact, lot of things which Stephen Covey had written, which many of you must have read, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. They are all from Vedas, Vedanta. In fact, you will find the, this book was published in, let me just one minute, I'm sorry, because I know I'm just taking a little bit of time. This book was first published in nineteen seventy eight, first edition nineteen seventy eight. I'll pick up Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. This is Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, much, much bigger bestseller than compared to, it was first published in nineteen ninety two. Now, a lot of people, lot of things which are written here are much before written here. So Epar Sardhi says, Epar Sardhi doesn't say anything. He says whatever was said in Vedas. That's why he's saying, if you read Veda, you will not understand. If you read Veda, you will not understand. First, you must know Sanskrit and translation is never proper. So as a result of which, what he decides, doesn't, he says a treatise, a commentary of Veda to the contemporary man is what he is giving. So he says, listen to me carefully, this was not supposed to be the session today, but this has become that session. I don't know why I'm taking it. Okay? I'm not able to see any one of you. Why am I not able to see any one of you?
You are sharing the screen, so.
I'm sharing the screen, but I'll be able to still see the people. No, no, I can't, okay. Madam. Okay. Now, when you see me, after even years together later, the moment you see me, you will say that, hey, Sridam, how are you? Now, how would you know that? How would you know that I'm Sridam? How would you know that I'm Sridam? How do you know that I am Sridam?
Because you were, before we met. Yeah, because you were different. From the day one.
No, but how do you identify me as Sridam? What makes you to identify me as Sridam?
Features.
Features, what feature?
Physical features.
Physical features, can you say anything easier than that?
Um, for me, I'll say the voice.
Okay. Voice, because you're hearing me now, but normally, so basically, anything is a physical, in a physical form, has got two things called as a name and a form. Moment I tell you a chalk piece, in your mind, you're able to visualize a chalk piece. Did you visualize? Moment I say an egg, the egg is visible in your mind. So everything has a name and a form. So basically, we are all what I call as physical personality. Am I just a physical personality? Am I just flesh, blood and mind or flesh, blood and whatever you see? Or am I much more than that? Tell me.
More, more, much more.
Okay. What am I? What am I?
Odds.
Hmm? Okay. The second layer, in fact, many people keep talking about personality development, personality development. Ask them, what is personality development first and foremost? The second layer is the mental personality. What is a mental personality? Mental personality is nothing but your mind. Mind is a stream of thoughts. Mind is a stream of thoughts. There is a difference between a river and a lake. Lake is stationary water, but when the same water flows, it becomes a river. And that's what is a river. Mind is a stream of thoughts. At this point in time, you must be thinking. Okay, Vikas is thinking, hey, he said public speaking, now he, why is he talking about physical, mental? What is it? What is the dinner for tonight? Will the client pay, make the payment today? Okay, what is going to happen? What is the book he is talking about? All these things, he'll be, he'll be thinking at this point of time because that is mind. Mind is a monkey. So first level, the base level is physical, next level is mental and then the third level, I'm not just a physical or, I'm not just a physical and mental personality, I'm something much more than that. The third layer is the intellectual personality. Intellectual personality is nothing but all the choices that you make in your life. You finished your tenth standard, you wanted to make a choice. Should I go for MPC, should I go for BiPC, should I go for MEC? You finished your college, should I go for employment or should I go for practice? Okay, your mom came and told me, told you that you should get married. So you started thinking, should I get arranged marriage or should I get low marriage? Choice was to be made. Now, five photographs are shown to you, which girl you like, a choice had to be made. So life is a series of choices. So out of the various thoughts, either which comes into your mind or which comes from the outside source, you have to make a choice, those choices are the intellectual personality. Beyond physical, beyond mental, beyond intellectual, do I have something? Is there any other personality? Answer, please, I'm not able to see any one of you. Is there anything beyond?
It's spiritual, sir.
Before spiritual?
Buddha, Buddha.
Buddha? Okay. In fact, this personality is not there in the, in the Vedanta treatise, but I've added that because it is also a very important personality, but Vedanta says in a different manner. It says behind all the four personalities, there is this personality. But I am saying that it is also a level of the personality, it is also a layer, it is also one more. Physical, mental, intellectual, then you have emotional personality. Are you an emotional personality or not? The why of 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 life is an emotion. Okay. You want to get a degree so that you can get a job. You want to get a job so that you can earn money. You can earn money so that you can lead a comfortable luxurious life. Comfort and luxury is a feeling. You want to get married, why you want to get married? Because you need a companion. Why do you need companion? Because you need somebody to love and somebody to be loved, which means what? Love is also an emotion. So everything, everything in life is emotion, emotion, emotion. So there is a physical personality, there is a mental personality, there is an intellectual personality, there is an emotional personality. Now, do we have another personality above these four? Yes, I have. I'm not going to take too much into it, but I'm just having come this far, let's go a little far onto this. The ultimate is, that is what Veda says, you are not a human being having a spiritual experience, but you are a hu, you are a spiritual being having a human experience. I repeat, you are not a human being having a spiritual experience, you are a spiritual being having a human experience, which is what now told by Stephen Covey and we all pay millions and go and listen to him. No, 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 no harm in that, but I'm saying the sources from our ancestors, from this land. Okay. The final is the spiritual personality, which is again explained in a superb manner, is that in the presence of a formless, the form acquires a presence. In the absence of that formless, the form loses its presence and that formless is the spirit, the energy, the atman, consciousness, whatever you call, okay, whatever way you call. Science calls it as energy, philosopher calls it as a consciousness. Vedas call it as atman, some other religions call it a spirit, some other religion calls it a soul. It is basically two human beings walking together and as they were walking, one guy fell down and the man who was standing could see the guy who was lying down, having eyes, having nose, having hands. The form is there, but the form has lost its presence because he realized that there is something formless which is there inside. And when the formless goes out, the form loses its presence, which is basically the spiritual personality. You don't have to know, there is no way to be no examination, so don't bother about it. So you have physical personality, mental personality, intellectual personality, emotional personality, spiritual personality. Holistic personality development means the development of all the personalities. Deepika Padukone, amazing physical personality. Mind, a sharp mind, intellectual also, okay, but emotion, she was into depression. Absolute depression. Tiger Woods, great physical personality. Extraordinary mental personality because you need a tremendous amount of concentration to play a game of golf, but absolutely weak towards the opposite sex. Lost everything. Salman Khan. You can drink twelve bottles, twelve rounds of rum, but you can't drive sitting on the champion seat or the driver's seat. Choices you make in life are horrible choices, wrong intellectual personality. So basically, you have physical, mental, intellectual, emotional, spiritual. Now you need to understand that subconscious mind is equal to, sorry, is equal to mind plus intellect plus emotion. Now, don't ask me how did I arrive at the formula. Just take this formula. Multiplied by the spirit, which means there is a spirit also involved. The spirit carries the karma of your earlier life because the concept of rebirth exists according to the faith and belief of many people. So your subconscious mind also carries the spiritual intelligence. That is why you can say, that is why you can say something which you have never heard, which you have never read, which you have never thought about and Swamiji Veekkananda calls it as beautifully calls it again, the eight volumes of Swamiji Veekkananda, if anybody wants to read, you can read, go and buy it in Ramakrishna, mad hundred rupees, it used to cost eight volumes and you can, everything is there about life in that eight volumes. And you will develop your English also. Now he says, I and you are just like a radio frequency. You just, you just have a tuner in your radio, you tune it and there is a frequency which is existing in the world, the spiritual intelligence. When your finite intelligence meets the spiritual intelligence, that is when you have access to the entire world. Now, which is nothing but your subconscious mind have access to the spiritual intelligence too. Your karma is also a part of subconscious mind. So mind, the mental personality is the conscious mind. The subconscious mind is the mind plus intellectual plus emotional multiplied by the spirit. Now you tell me, which is more powerful, conscious mind or the subconscious mind? Have you understood any questions up till now? I've been very, very fast. I'm sorry about that. No question, have you understood, not understood, no, it has just gone here and it does not, it is, it went this side and came out this side for some of you. So your conscious mind works in one manner and your subconscious, this is why you need to understand. You don't have to, even if you don't understood all that I have spoken, you can say it's all crap, it's okay. Now you have to understand. Conscious mind knows what is right, what is wrong. Conscious mind knows what is legal, what is illegal. Conscious mind knows what is. Conscious mind knows what is good, what is bad, what is positive, what is negative. Subconscious mind does not know. Subconscious mind works on belief. Subconscious mind, what it says is that what I experience is what I believe in. What I do not experience, I don't believe. Father tells all of you have children. If your children nearby, please ask them to go inside. Father tells the cha-san on a Saturday evening. Jut bol nai beta, galat bol nai. Truth is always what you have to speak. But next day morning, when the phone rings, papa told the son, bolo, papa Jaipur gaya bolo. Where does ya aara bolo? Yesterday night, you told your son not to lie, which was to the conscious mind. And today you gave him an experience of asking him to lie, he became a liar. Sorry about what I'm going to say, but this is what you will understand very easily. Father was all about, you know, talking about right things, prayer, everything, everything right. That is what he talks. Mother has gone to her house. And the son is seeing the father fiddling around with the servant. And in his mind, it has gone in, it is okay. Subconscious mind goes by your experience. You are what you are because of your experiences. So if you think today you are a negative person, you have experienced negativities in your life. And the more and more and more you experience something, that is what you become. So subconscious mind goes by experience. So because you know, what is the connection between all this and this? So if I have to believe that I'm a great speaker, I have to speak. Great. Experience is what my, what is for walking on the fire? Why do people walk on the fire? I made people walk on the fire. I can make you guys walk on the fire and nothing will happen. In 2015, in the month of February, a client of mine, Barla Shakti Cement, said, Sridham, the year is a team which does not believe that 2015 and 2016 financial year targets can be met. Everybody has given up. Before the, before the financial, they started, they said they have given up. Now, he said, you have to make them understand that nothing is impossible. All their beliefs they hold or basically the beliefs are false evidence accepted real. Fear is false evidence accepted real, and that is what they have. Now I said, if I give a lecture, Gyan for two hours, nothing will happen. Sushil was the vice president of the company. His name is Sushil. Sushil, nobody will understand. I said, you have to make them to do something. And I had, I, I devil's advocate or something, you know, people, the moment I speak in devil's advocate and I tell them, this is how you have to speak. Huh? Not possible. And when they speak, they will believe, yeah, I can do it. So what did we do? We made 150 people walk on fire. I think if I'm right, it was at Leo Meridian. And that's why Anthony Robbins, they go to Singapore and walk on fire and everything is what is to make them do, that's experience. Experience is what matters. Experience is not what happens to you, it is what you do with what happens to you. If you want to make a note of it, make a note of it. Experience is not what happens to you, it is what you do with what happens to you. Something has happened to you? Somebody has cheated you? See, sorry to use these words, you know, I, I, I'm unable to explain it in a different manner today and all of you are listening to this program. Somebody goes through a sexual harassment. Experience. Somebody decides to commit suicide. But somebody else turns into an activist and says, I will ensure that what I went through, nobody else should go through. Experience, right? Both of them went through the same experience. That's why they say, two men look through this prison bars. One man looked at the sand and said, that's where I'm going to go. Another man looked at the moon and said, that's where I'm going to go. Both the men were behind the prison bars. So experience is not what happens to you, it is what you do with what happens to you. So every experience, you got to take it. I'll explain to you more as we go along. So this whole experience of public speaking, I can take public speaking as just as a public speaking or public speaking itself can be used to bring about an attitudinal, a subconscious mind realignment. I don't believe I can speak in a great manner. Believe. What will kill that experience? What will kill that belief? Is to go and speak where you yourself tell. That's why in the Announce My Arrivals speech, I would always say, in those thirty minutes, I didn't acquire the skills, but in those thirty minutes, when I displayed those skills, my subconscious mind went through a rapid transformation because my beliefs changed. You got to ask yourself, when was the last thing, what did you do where your beliefs changed? What have you done? For your beliefs to change? I cannot speak to the CEO of a company. Go and talk to a CEO of a company, that is going beyond your comfort zone. What you think you can't. And I told those guys, 150 people, few hours back, you never thought that you can walk on fire, which is what the conscious mind was saying. Now your subconscious mind will tell you, hey, I walked on fire. I walked on fire, experience. So take this journey of making a presentation or giving a speech, I may introduce even devil's advocate, I don't know. Take this experience of delivering the speech to tell your subconscious mind that I'm experiencing something different. Sridham, physical, mental, intellectual, forget about that. I'll give you some small tips as far as subconscious mind is concerned. If something good happens, go celebrate, put it on Facebook status, give la doo to everybody, talk in pages. Talk for five minutes, ten minutes, one hour, call everybody and say, this is what happened. Then something bad happens, just tell in one line. Analyze in prospect and move on. In fact, we do the reverse. When failure happens, we become emotional. When success happens, we become analytical. We should actually do the reverse. When success happens, you have to be emotional. Sensei, because that emotion is what you want to attract. And when failure happens, you have to just ask, why did I fail? What happened? What did I do and what did I not do? And become analytical, move on. And that's why I always say, ask this one question, what next and act? What next and act? What happened? I failed, it's okay. There is going to be tomorrow an opportunity. Any questions before we move to Arish Reddy? This is not planned. I don't know for whom I'm giving this message. Okay. It does have to come at some stage. It had to come at some stage. Normally I would ask Meenal to deliver this, I would have asked Arish to deliver this, but today I said somehow, you know, yeah, yeah, Sushin, go ahead, Sushin, you are saying something.
It's a very content, rich talk which you have given. You just have to figure it out, the connection between public speaking and this.
So public speaking, you have to take it as an experience. When you go through that experience, let Bhishaka or Damini come on now, come on now, Sushon and come. One of you can use, yeah. Did you do well in, Bhishaka, did you do well in devil's advocate?
I, I did pretty well.
Okay. So what happened to your mind? What happened to your mental state before and after? And what did you see in those fifty people or sixty people? I don't know how many people were there in your batch.
Um, I think before, when I heard you speaking, like you said, this is the way you need to speak and this is a transition which you need to take in. And which was like, we don't know how to do it, right? But then I think the practice thing happened and it was great. I mean, when I saw the video after it was, after we got it, yes, I think we did a pretty good job there.
What are the transformation which happened?
Uh, I think how to like start and frame and
In your mind, is there anything, any kind of a transformation which happened in your mind?
Yes, so in your mind only, so you were prepared that, okay, you need to speak this way and you need to present that way and you had more than consciously, subconsciously, you were trying to do things, right? Like probably move your hands and speak louder than you can. Yes, in between there are modulations, this is, this, this was there in the mind.
Okay. Damini? Do you want to come in? Yeah, Arish?
Yes, sir. Uh, so I have similar experience. So before last year, I have like very bad experience of public speaking, which I am carrying for years. And then I quit my job to become a teacher which requires public speaking. Uh, this is when I, before joining our session, I took help from one more person. And he made me go on to the stage. Like he, he, it is a batch of ten people, he explained to do this, this and he asked us to go on stage. Uh, I was nervous initially and once it is completed, I was completely changed. Like this is the max, what will happen? People may laugh and no one laughs, which is again a good experience. Then he suggested us to record a video every day so that I don't need to worry about speaking. So we started recording videos, so actual plan is to do for sixty-six days. Uh, I was so impressed with recording videos that I went ahead and recorded 150 videos, like every day one video, so on. And now if someone asks me to speak on any subject, if I know, I don't know. The first thing I say is, I will raise my hand. And once they call my name, I will go and speak and I don't bother about what happens next. So as you said, it was all tweaked in the subconscious that if wherever there is an opportunity, I am new in the group or I am old in the group. Without my knowledge, I will raise the hand and then I will think why I raised that knowledge secondary.
So one of the challenges people will have, Sushin, is that to transfer this subconscious mind transformation from one domain to another domain. Were able to get what I'm saying, you know, we all, you know, that is where the challenge is. Now for Vikas, I'm just giving Vikas as an example, just Vikas as an example, not for anything, any other reason. Okay. I do public speaking, I have transformed, but now how do I transform, how do I transfer that to my business? If I acquire this confidence, how do I transfer that to my business? How do I transfer that to anything which I do? For me, the days when I became a public speaking champion, every time I won a championship in public speaking, I consciously, now this is like consciously, consciously you want to replicate that into your sales. You want to walk with the same confidence. You want to do everything, you know, so the challenge for people is their inability to transfer the transformation I have acquired from one intervention to another intervention. Now there are several chartered accountants, wise devil's advocate have been so popular in center of excellence, basically because these are all bunch of students who come who are in the final stages. Some of them have already cleared, some of them are not cleared. And those who have not cleared, they take it and transfer it to the next up, uh, exam is they're going to appear, where with the same mindset, they approach the exam. So for some of them, they carry it for the interview when they go and they approach. But some of them, they don't know. And they don't take help. And this transformation becomes a one-time change. There's a great man who said, the difference between change and transformation is changes temporary, transformation is permanent. Caterpillar has turned into a butterfly, it is a transformation. Even if the butterfly wants to, it cannot go back to become a caterpillar. There is not a change, it's a transformation. So there are people who have been able to transfer that transformation from one and that is where experience comes. An experienced professional who has seen life will be able to carry this from one to another. Many other people get stuck. Arish, how much time it will take for your presentation?
Uh, seven minutes, I have prepared as per the time.
Okay, we'll go ahead, listen to Arish Reddy and then I've given you the rights to be the co-host. What you want, then what we will do is we'll share those YouTube links of the past matches in the group.
Sure.
So like Vikas had asked, so they can refer to all those videos and then they can decide how they want to go.
Sure.
Go ahead, Arish. And one minute, Arish. If you have any question, if you have not understood anything, if you did not like what I spoke, if you liked what I spoke, whatever it is, after Arish Reddy's speech is over, ask me. Transfer of the transformation from one to another is not so easy. But if you are a cricket fan, you must have seen many a times. When a batsman who can also bowl, take five wickets, then the commentator would say, he will carry that confidence when he is going to the batting. When somebody played an incredible innings, the commentator would say, he will begin where he started. Sorry, he will begin where he ended the last innings. But for some, and for some of them, like Sushin, sorry, Sachin. Sushin, Sushin, it's coming, Sachin Tendulkar. Sometimes what happens, he will fail with the bat. In fact, it so happened in Kuchin against Australia, he failed with the bat. The commentator said, I think he should be itching to now have the ball in his hand and take a few wickets because he wants to prove a point and he will take five wickets in that match. This is called as transferring the transformation of the confidence from one area to another. Okay. I'm there to help you out, we'll take care of that. Go ahead, Arish.
Good evening, friends. Robin Sharma once quoted, words can create, words can destroy us. Choose yours carefully. Today's topic is the power of human voice. The greatest power in this world is the power of human voice. Human voice created most revolutions in this world. Today, in the coming few minutes, I want to take you through how the son of a migrant student from a poor country of Africa became the forty-fourth president of United States of America. Yes, you guessed it right. He is Barack Hussein Obama. Obama was born in an island state of Hawaii, far, far away from the landmass of North America. It is like Andaman and Nicobar Island for India, only tourism and some warships. He don't even have a political background. Withstanding all the odds, he campaigned, contested and became the president of second largest democracy and the most powerful nation in this planet. Obama was not known to many people. He is a complete outsider. But in the year 2004, something very, very, very special happened. It is when in 2004, Obama is the keynote speaker at Democratic National Convention. This is when the power of his voice reached millions of American homes. He got the nomination and the rest is history. What is so special in that speech? I want you to tell me after watching the video I am going to share.
Tonight is a particular honor for me because let's face it, my presence on this stage is pretty unlikely. My father was a foreign student, born and raised in a small village in Kenya. My parents shared not only an improbable love, they shared an abiding faith in the possibilities of this nation. I stand here knowing that my story is part of the larger American story, that I owe a debt to all of those who came before me and that in no other country on earth is my story even possible. Alongside our famous individualism, there is another ingredient in the American saga. A belief that we are all connected as one people. If there is a child on the south side of Chicago who can't read, that matters to me even if it's not my child. If there is a senior citizen somewhere who can't pay for their prescription drugs and having to choose between medicine and the rent, that makes my life poorer even if it's not my grandparent. It is that fundamental belief, I am my brother's keeper, I am my sister's keeper, that makes this country work. E pluribus unum, out of many, one.
Welcome back. Can you tell me what is so special in this speech, which is regarded as the speech which made Obama the president of United States of America? You can unmute until or you can chart, put it in the chart. Emotional, yes. So he bought a common ground between the people. It is an emotional speech, yes, and he is convincing people that he is one among them. It's basically a story. What is a story? Story is a fact embedded with emotions which inspires people to take an action. Does the speech have a fact? Yes. Does he embedded it with an emotion? Yes. Did it inspire? Yes, once the speech is completed, everyone was shouting, change we can, change we can. And the rest is history. This is the power of human voice, which leads us to our first commandment. Talk shall be ready to face people. Just imagine, before this speech, someone called Obama, hey Barack, come here. This guy said, you, you Barack, you are going to be the keynote speaker in the convention. And he said, oh, no, 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 I cannot do it. How can I be a keynote speaker? I am not confident. I cannot speak in front of so many people. And he missed the opportunity. And now Obama would be sitting like this. He would be regretting throughout his life, just like another Murti from Coca-Cola. There is a great saying in Tamil. Adhrishtam okkasaari talp tattu ne, duradhrishtam talputise dakkata. Which just means, opportunity, good luck knocks your door only once. Bad luck knocks your door till the time you opens. Remember, when you run away from people, you are just running away from opportunities as well. And these are the once in a lifetime opportunity, guys. Whenever you, you get something like this, grab it with both the hands and rock it. Thank you for being such a great audience. Thank you very much.
Very good, good job. Okay, so now what we will do is, what we will do is, Arish, help us to share some of the videos of the presentations which the first batch had done. I don't want to get into the second batch and third batch and all, so second, first batch alone, we'll keep it. Now, let them watch it. If they have any questions, they can reach out to you, they can reach out to me. See, the idea of not sharing was, we don't want, in fact, last time, we didn't even allow, I didn't even ask the, my co-trainers to share their presentations, basically because we wanted it to be as original as possible. And in those original, you will see someone like John Koshy coming out with an amazing presentation with a limitation he has got. And he will supplement it to the great presentation. Okay. At the end of the day, impact is more important, motors opporand is not important. Can I use a video? Yes, you can. Can I use a PowerPoint? Yes, you can. Can I use an analogy? Yes, you can. Impactful. So the highlight of what, Arish Reddy, power of human voice, Barack Obama, sat like this. Adhrishtam okkasaari, tadutti duradhrishtamu. Okay, that is what it is. So that is the key, key, what is the impact? The impact is far more important. Okay. Questions please, open to any question from any one of you. Sunday and Wednesday, Arish, coordinate with people and ensure that we have enough people this Sunday and we have some people for the Wednesday. Keep Rajendra for Wednesday?
Yes.
Do not keep him for Sunday because he will not be in a position to present this Sunday.
Sure.
Give them the time. Just coordinate with people, whenever you have time. Yes, anybody wants anything to share? It's eight fifty-seven? Okay. War for the evening. Very silent day. Because I am shouting a lot today. I'll share a lot more things on subconscious mind and transferable transformation, yeah, on Sunday, yeah. Maybe you want to say something?
I just made my video on so that you can see that, see me. But yeah, I'm always, the Harish statement of, you get the opportunity only once, grab it, don't, don't think twice, grab it. That's all for me.
So, okay. You hear me? No, wow.
The sessions are only wow.
Yeah, that is one of the things.
I think the way you put across the importance of transformation when you take up an intervention, I think is a key point to be understood. A lot of time we take an intervention, but, but we do not let ourselves transform. We hold us back and go back to our comfort zone. Understanding that concept, why it is required? Because you have taken up this intervention for the very reason that you want to get something out of it and transform yourself. So understanding that importance, not only here, not only public speaking, but going forward, whatever intervention one takes, you should allow yourself to get transformed.
Important word you used, allow, you should let that happen.
Yes.
Believing that you are a Niagara Falls. In fact, I can tell you, the first two, three competitions, I failed, I just lost. Okay. First time I lost, second time I lost, you know, I have not won, I have not won the first prize or second prize, it's such numero, you know, I didn't win. So one day I deserved, okay. I always had a dream of speaking like this, so let me go and speak like this.
It's nine o'clock.
That's it. In Niagara Falls is waiting inside each one of us. I'm not joking. In Niagara Falls is waiting inside each one of us, but you are the dam. You have stopped it. Who have to let it go? Yourself. Okay. Anybody else? Amit?
Sir, Niagara Falls concept is the war for the day to me.
You are a Niagara Falls, waiting to explode and you are the dam.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Else, 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 no, 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 no. Okay. Amit, you should have called me a few days before, I would have told you that I have got a personal line with Narmala Shitaraman and she had already told me that income tax will be postponed. You're the officer, okay, 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 okay. No, it's okay. Okay. Uh, good night, guys, thank you very much. Stay safe, get ready, get prepared, reach out to me, reach out to Harish Reddy. Okay, Rajendra, you get time to prepare. Okay, your golden moment, one minute, can you unmute yourself, Rajendra? Now you are muted.
Yes.
Rajendra, would it be possible for you to speak on Sunday on your golden moment at the last?
Okay, no issue, I can speak.
You will be in a position, okay. So next Wednesday, prepare yourself for the presentation part of it.
Okay.
And take help, take help. When there are people who are available to help you, please take help, if you require. If you don't require, absolutely no problem. Okay. Good night, all the best, stay safe, take care.
And have a good night.
On Sunday evening by five fifteen P M. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.